Good evening. It is Monday, May 20th, 2024, and this is a meeting of the Southborough Planning Board. The Planning Board is now in session. Congratulations, Ms. Houlihan, on your election win. Welcome back. The first item on the agenda is an A and R for 66 Oak Hill Road.
So we received an application for an A and R for 66 Oak Hill Road from the applicant and owner of the property Chad Chahin, Chahin, right? And he's here this evening to answer any questions. The plans were submitted by Farland Corporation, Stevie Caravalho, who is in the meeting room. Maybe you can promote him as panelist. He's at the bottom of the list. There we go. So they submitted this A and R and it's one lot at the corner of Oak Hill Road and a section of town right of way that leads to the water tank up towards the east. If you recall, relatively recently, there was another A and R submitted way to the bath with the Bartolini property. I think Peter Bemis had done that and had split up some lots and stuff. So this particular lot is just being divided into two lots. It currently has frontage on Oak Hill Road and the rear lot number two would have frontage on this right of way. And you can see it in the plan. So we reviewed it. The application was filed with the town clerk. Revisions were made. I checked all the deed references, the scale, and everything appears to be in order. They added all the features that are above and below ground that are pertinent, like the wetlands on the back lot, the septic area, the paved driveways so you could see, and if there's any stone walls. So the number 66 is an existing house and the lot to the rear is what would be created.
Thank you, Karina. Welcome. Do you want to add anything or did Karina cover it all? Thank you. Okay. Mr. Stein?
So Karina, have we done A and Rs on this right of way before using that as frontage?
Yeah. Yes. Yes, as a matter of fact, in the Dropbox, I left two reference plans of the prior A and Rs along that.
How long ago?
Let me tell you. Hold on.
But I could have looked at that.
No, that's okay. I know where it is fast. Let me just take a quick peek. So there, there is one from July 19th, 2021. And that was the one further back where the road discontinues with the old Oak Hill Road. If you zoom down just a little bit, Colleen. Yeah, we want to get to the top of the plan. Keep going. Right there, see in the top, it says Old Mill Road discontinued. It's beyond that point where the town has a water tank.
Okay, what year is the other one?
I'll show you here.
Okay, thanks. That's great. Okay, no more questions. Thanks a lot.
Ms. Houlihan?
No questions. Thanks.
Mr. Maria?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Ms. Brascio?
I have no questions either. Thank you.
Does the town maintain that right of way? Can you come up here so we can hear you? And just introduce yourself so people can hear you.
Chad Chahin, owner of 66 Oak Hill Road with my wife. Thank you all for your time today. My understanding is the town does maintain that for the access to the water tower. I wouldn't say my answer is final. That's what I think the answer is.
And is it paved?
It is paved, yes.
Okay.
Do they plow it?
My understanding, when I spoke with the neighbors in the back that had recently purchased the property, is the town is responsible for paving it. At least up to the water tower. Yes.
Yeah, I have no more questions.
So motion is to endorse the A and R for 66 Oak Hill Road.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
D'Amiria, yes.
Brascio, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Have a wonderful evening. Thank you so much.
So Jed, the Planning Board will sign the plans tonight and we'll let you know tomorrow or the next day when everything's in order so that you can pick up the Mylar because your engineer or you will have to record it if you're going to move forward with that division. Oh, you're very welcome.
The next item on the agenda is a discussion item, MBTA Communities Multi-Family Zoning, Mass. General Law 48, Section 3A, multi-family zoning by right. So I was thinking, well, first off, to prepare for the mapping session on June 3rd and ask, so Colleen and I had gone through the half mile area and I ran all the lots through the compliance model and we marked any of the zoning non-compliant lots. And also, there's a spreadsheet that has all the unit capacity listed. So I was wondering if you thought a map like that would be helpful for the mapping session, but would have like the acreage on it and have the unit capacity on it so you could tell pretty quickly whether it's a compliant zone. Mr. Stein?
I need to look at the map.
You have it in your packet.
Oh, well, that would help. I was trying to pull it up on the Dropbox. So this is it right here?
So there are two of them. This one, this one, if you zoom in, it has the lot sizes. I was unable to do that. When I zoomed, I couldn't get the PDF to show the whole map. So this has the lot sizes that does not.
So are all like the?
Orange or non-compliant.
The orange ones are non-compliant?
Yeah, they're under 25,000 square feet.
Well, thank you for putting in the time to do this. It's obviously very helpful in that it provides a lot of clarity. Unfortunately, it seems like there's not much, it's like half the area. So what are we left with? Like, the whole thing has to be part of the? I mean, I don't mean to be flippant about it, but.
So so you can use non-compliant lots, they just don't count towards your unit capacity.
For the purpose of contiguousness.
Right, or land area. So I think it's possible, like I ran a couple of things that did comply. So I think it's possible to do, but definitely there are limited options.
Mimi, just for the sake of the audience, when you're suggesting non-compliant, it means the existing zoning, right? Like, we'd have to change the existing zoning in order for us. So they could, we could still use them. We just wouldn't meet the capacity required by the state.
That's correct.
Without changing the underlying zoning. So, so the request, I'm curious if this would be helpful for our state communications to share this map as a supplement. I know you're, it's Clutchman, is it Ms. Clutchman? I wonder if that would help. I'm sure it wouldn't, but it might be just nice to add some supplemental because I think this is an excellent
Yeah. In the So the blue area is all the historic district per Mass. Historical. The blue dots are all historic buildings on those lots.
So when you, you basically, you did this and then you schemed out a couple of options for what would work. Are those in the Dropbox or in the packet?
No, because I didn't know if we wanted to have some options or if we just wanted to leave it open during the mapping session for people to.
Okay.
I can, I can show you.
And you're going to chair the mapping session? Mimi?
Sure.
Assuming you get reappointed to that position. So I'm making an assumption, but.
That's not on the agenda tonight. It's next night.
We're not doing that tonight?
No. We forgot in all the.
Okay. Okay, so therefore you definitely are chairing the mapping session. And so you'll be just be taking people through this and saying, okay, next step, though, is to keeping in mind that we have to have contiguous lots and keeping in mind that each of these parcels has a certain acreage. And, you know, we basically want the input to create the district or sub-district that will be compliant. And that's the purpose of the mapping session.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So you do think that that, that having a map with all that information?
Yes, I do.
Is helpful. Okay. Ms. Houlihan?
Yeah, so thank you so very much for doing this because I think it's very illuminating, particularly the historic district and the historic buildings as, as we clarified in our rubric. So I think it's very helpful.
Mr. Maria?
No, I think it's great. It represents really a lot of work. I, I think it shows something and if it's okay, I'd like to just point out this really gets back to kind of our roots where we sort of were forming, you know, what we thought would make a good district, trying to think about the spirit of the MBTA communities, what's walkable, what might have sidewalks, what wouldn't interrupt the traffic and all these different things. I think this really highlights to me that there is only a couple of options. And I wonder if we would, you know, instead of starting completely clean, if we want to give a couple of options. I mean, I think either we, you know, put the zone down along, you know, along the southern portion, sort of creeps all the way down the road. And if it's okay, I might mention that we can see it right on the map that there's one neighborhood that could accommodate the entire 10 acres and that's Blendon Woods. I had done some work and I just want to mention that I calculate 11 parcels. It looks like maybe it's more. You can see that there's no historic homes. There's no change to the underlying zoning because all the properties are greater than 25,000 square feet. So they're all rez B. So that's one of our pillars is we don't want to change any underlying zoning. There's no real impact to neighborhood traffic because the traffic exits onto Southville Road and it's super walkable. It's only 1,700 feet from the train station and has sidewalks. So I think that that's a very viable location. Of course, we want to hear from the neighbors, especially the ones that live right there. But also, these are really large lots and not likely to be buildable, I think. You know, if we're thinking about the 20-year plan, you know, I think possibly, but. So I think there's really only two choices as far as I can tell, but I'm open to hearing others. But I think it would be beneficial to kind of give sort of a visual because I feel like if you give somebody the map and say, start from square one, we're going to end up with a lot of data that we had like the first time, which was good for the first time because we heard a lot of things. But I think now we're getting down to the wire. I think we, I think that our public is demanding a little bit more from us to say, well, you tell us where you think it could work, A, B, C, D, and we'll pick it. So that's kind of how I'm thinking about things. I'd like to kind of go in that direction.
Ms. Brascio?
Thank you. Mimi, thank you for doing this. For me personally, I can tell you I have a much clearer understanding. And again, maybe it's because I'm newer on Planning Board. This paints a true picture. And I think similarly to what Deb said, I mean, there's really only four or five options realistically. And I think if this is on the table, I don't see people choosing lots that are clearly non-conforming. I think that this creates a picture of, you know, what's available. And I think it also shows the trouble that that zone has in trying to meet the requirements. And as Marnie said, I think this is important to go to, what's it, Ms. Clutchman? Again, this is a true picture. This isn't us trying to get out of doing something. This is us being restrained on what we can do in that area for a variety of reasons. So thank you for doing this, Mimi. And again, I'm open either way to doing options or, I mean, I think this creates the options. I mean, there's not much, much choice other than this. So thank you.
So does the board want to have some options provided for the, because if we have a, so two things. We have a map and Colleen's map has all the acreage on it. I couldn't do that on mine, but we can do that on this. And we can put all the unit capacities on it. So it's very clear what, you know, would and wouldn't be compliant. And we could have some compliance zones as examples or to see what the feedback is on those or?
Yeah, I was thinking along the lines of examples.
Okay.
Illustrated purposes.
I think examples help. I think very clearly, like, we also struggled with the mapping sessions, right? Because you do get so many variety of different suggestions. So while I like the examples, I don't know if those examples also, maybe the people who attend can say whether or not they become their options. Which I guess they could, right? Like, if we did say the Blendon Woods area, that meets the 10-acre requirement and that's going to be the choice. I just think we also, I know it's not the conversation today, what the plan is for the third, but having a clear directive out of what actually happens out of that mapping session.
So just so that you're all aware, so we don't have a meeting between the third and when we send, need to send it in. So in my mind, it would be better to have options there that maybe could be voted on so we can send it out. Otherwise, we'll have a special meeting for something.
Well, we have a meeting on the 17th.
Do we?
Yep.
Yeah.
Oh. Okay.
And you mean sending it out for the 90-day?
Yes, yes, that's what I mean.
Does it meet the requirements?
Yeah. Yes, they need the 90 days and then I've seen other towns that have gotten back letters that have 1, 2, 3, 4, fix those. We're good.
Why don't we start in the public hearings for all-time meeting?
I would, after we get a zone for the station area. I think we.
So immediately after we arrive at the, so assuming we have a productive mapping session, June 17th, we would ratify the results and then start the public hearings on July 22nd?
Well, we have, the mapping session's on the 3rd.
Yep.
So yeah, hopefully we can decide on the 17th. Yeah.
And first public hearing is July 22nd?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we just need time to advertise that. The two weeks before the meeting.
I think that's.
I think that will work.
Plenty of time, yeah.
It's usually three and a half week or three-week timeframe. That's the beginning of July. Yeah, so we're good. We should be good.
Okay. Did you have anything else on MBTA?
Let me check here really quickly. So we received an email from Mr. Paul Carter at Six Hillside Ave regarding a article in the Boston Globe. Hopefully you all had a chance to see that. If not, it's in your email. We received an email from resident Anita Reader for Blendon Woods Drive with comments in support of the mapping session for the station area. And they would like to be able to attend and appreciate the opportunity for the June 3rd session. And they said having some documentation beforehand would be very beneficial to preparing for the mapping session. And again, that was resident at for Blendon Woods. We had received some input from Andrew Fath on different scenarios that were in an email previously for the Planning Board to review. Then I think these were already in there. We received another email from Mr. Carter at Six Hillside Ave with comments and suggestions and draft maps of possible overlay district areas, which was forwarded to the Planning Board members. Then we have not heard back yet from the EO HLC and the Secretary Augustus on our, the Planning Board's and Select Board's letter regarding asking for relaxing of the requirement in the half-mile and an extension to the timeframe. There is an event that's scheduled at Framingham State, I believe, where there's an in-person meeting where Mr. Augustus will, Secretary Augustus will be speaking there if anyone's interested in attending from the Planning Board. There's limited seating. It's a free registration. But they'll be talking about housing like that. It's Framingham. Yep. So if anyone wants information on that, I think I forwarded that, but if anybody else wants, they can contact me. And I think that is, brings us pretty much up to date.
Okay. All right. So for the did you want to add something else?
Do we have the room, like the it's good, wait, the mapping session is going to be at the Senior Center, right? And that's reserved? What about?
Sam?
Yeah.
And then Bridget will be preparing the minutes for that.
Thanks.
Okay. So Colleen, so this map, there, I have a few edits on it. One thing that we haven't gotten the okay for the state to move the the circle, so that, can that be adjusted in PDF or do? Okay. So I'll send you the, because there are some non-compliant lots that aren't showing here. And there's a compliant lot, 86 Southville, that's showing as non-compliant and that's compliant. I will do that. Anything else from the board on this? Any, yes, sir.
Heard my comments before, so I'll try not to repeat anything. And I know that you guys have a lot of work in dealing with this half-mile radius. I'd ask that the Board reconsider the selection of the parcels on the north side. And I understand if you don't want to reconsider that, but I feel that I should at least suggest that instead of Madison Place and the Technology Center, that the Board consider the Dell property, that the Board consider the property, Bartolini property across from Ken's Foods and the Trucking Company parcel. I say I understand if the Board doesn't want to do that because in light of the Boston Globe article, I think it's very clear that the majority of the communities are taking the same approach that Southborough is probably going to be taking, which is to select parcels that are already fully developed as a way of getting around the law. So the second thing, and I know, I know what the Board is thinking and where you're planning to go and the selectmen are planning to go. And it's totally understandable because that's what all the other towns are doing. The other thing, just brief suggestion is, in terms of, as you know, I'm an engineer and I've done a lot of design projects. In thinking about the mapping session, Board might consider, normally what you would do in a situation like this is show the existing conditions. You know, and this map, I think, is great existing conditions. And then talk about what the constraints, what the issues are with the design here. In this case, it's a design for a district. And then present three alternatives and present the advantages or disadvantages of each alternative. And then the Board, depending, and the Board has a lot of design work to do to come up with three alternatives. Then decide whether the Board wants to have a recommended alternative and these are other alternatives. But I think that that's a logical and a tried and true way of moving forward with a design project. So just my two cents, not trying to tell you guys what to do. It's just a suggestion to provide some real structure to the workshop. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Paul. I would just note that the headline in the print copy of the Globe article is much more salacious than the one on the online version. Yeah, meant to grab headlines evidently. But I think that that's, the Globe was trying to make something out of nothing because the state fully expected developed properties to be included in the zones and they are. Well, it's right in their compliance guidelines. For the purposes of compliance with Section 3A, multi-family zoning district should be a neighborhood-scale district, not a single development site on which the municipality is willing to permit a particular multi-family project. And also, nothing in Section 3A or these guidelines should be interpreted as a mandate to construct specified number of housing units nor a housing unit production target. Demonstrating compliance with the minimum multi-family unit capacity requires only that the MBTA community show that the zoning allows multi-family housing as of right and that a sufficient number of multi-family housing units could be added to or replace existing units and structures over time, even though such additions or replacements may be unlikely to occur soon. So it was, it's not trying to get around the law. It's what was expected when they wrote it.
Mimi, before he does that, can I just add something to? Mr. Carter, I appreciate all your feedback and everything you've contributed to this discussion as well. But I just, this isn't a Planning Board and a Select Board supporting something. There was a mapping session that over 100 people attended. So on the two parcels that you're questioning, whether we should come up with three additional options, just to be respectful to those that did come, that, you know, those parcels were highly suggested by the public. So I just, again, I want to have fairness to anyone that's listening that may have attended. I don't want them to think that, you know, we are trying to lessen, you know, the input that they provided. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So in light of, Mimi, I'm thinking that what we're really talking about is what's happening in Cambridge, basically where two families or flats, what they're doing, developers are doing because they can. And it's, it makes perfect sense is they're, you know, tearing down the two-family or whatever and they're putting in four units or five units of condos or apartments. So it occurs to me that maybe that's what's going to be the result of this is that's the kind of thing that would happen. The other thing is that I wish the MBTA would have allowed this to be done, towns to achieve these goals over time. I wish they would have allowed a phased or staged, you know, for the town to be able to pick how many units, multi-family units. for the town to be able to pick how many units, multi-family units, they can tolerate in a year and spread it over five or 10 years. That, I think, would make a lot more sense, would be a lot more palatable to the towns. And it would involve just saying, this is the cap for each year. Once it's filled, we're not going to allow for any more. And this is our total commitment over 10 years. So I, I, I respect, all I'm suggesting is that I want this to get approved at town meeting. I want this, the board to be, be able to get through this. And just like anything with the butters, it's very easy to just get sucked into the butter thing and to not be able to make any progress. And we know that that can't happen.
Thank you. Sure.
I just want to also say, like, one thing that I've learned in this election process that we just went through is that there are other ways to do this, and I think the MBTA communities is, is one way, and I don't think it's necessarily the best way. So to your point of being able to phase in, we can, as the Planning Board, put something to the town, and if there's options, and I think there are better, like, housing options that, this is only 10% affordable. Like, that's actually not going to solve a lot of problems that this town has. So we can come forth and do something a little bit differently. And I think it puts, the impetus is on us to think about that. And I, I said I would think about that. And I think that there's opportunities in the Dell property, and how do we think about that? Is that different type of zoning there that we can put in place? And I think that's what we're trying to think about too, holistically as a town. So I appreciate all of your work, all of your comments, everything that you've sent. You've been a very strong advocate, and I appreciate that. And I know we're all in a different, a difficult position.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Freddie Gillespie, 78 Southville Road, in the half-mile district of the MBTA. And I also respect the work of the Planning Board. I know it's not an easy task, but I wanted to raise a few concerns. And I know we're having a mapping session, some of these will come out there, but one thing that's been suggested by people who, in conversation, and no one's come forth with a proposal, is when you see these communities that are not passing it, and multiple ones recent weekend, what ability does the Planning Board have to reach out to every community that has not passed it yet that's required to, and particularly the ones that have failed it, to work together to go to the state collectively? Because as an individual town, not approving it, you're just going to be ignored, in my opinion. Placated. I think working in numbers, and as you just said, a phasing or something, some other proposal you can come forth with. Because my understanding is that our state legislatures have not been responsive when people have reached out to them to discuss this. And it's only by collectively saying, this one size does not fit all. What works in Cambridge does not work in Southborough. What works in Framingham does not work in Southborough. And what works in Southborough may not work in Westborough. We have a unique situation with a train station up against a river. And an abutting town, two towns, actually. You know, so, and a historic little neighborhood, and the most affordable section of Southborough that are going to unfairly bear the burden of this. And I wanted to speak to that, which I don't think was intentional or is intentional, but it is obvious to me who lives in that area that the Planning Board has been very careful to choose properties that aren't ready to go, except for in the half-mile. You're working to include eight acres ready to go. That's disrespectful to the community. There's no other way to say it. That's 100, up to 120 units. They may not all fit there, but you know they're ready to go with building housing there. You don't have 120 units ready to go. You put it on top of a 40B on the north side? Not even the north side, that traffic will end up on the south side. You've chosen an industrial site not ready to go. You've got Fitz's parking lot over an acre, ready to go. You're working hard to change the line to include eight acres ready to go. And there's probably more, right? And if I have the numbers wrong, correct me. But there's a four lease for sale, and I know the property owner has met with staff of the Planning Board at least, to discuss putting a 40B there or some sort of housing. I may be wrong on that, but, you know, that's what I've heard. And that's what feels hard in a section of town that has never been really treated well. And that's how many people there feel. And you're pushing more development there, why? Just really think about that for the mapping session. And I had many people tell me that at the mapping session, they had picked areas. And the reason people weren't coming was because they felt you had heard them. And they hadn't all been just focused on Southville Road, which it is now. All the traffic is coming to a certain section of that town. I think you need to be really careful about the message you're sending to that neighborhood, my neighborhood and my neighbors. So I'll end that there. And want to just say, when you talk about the 10% affordable, it's not even, it's less than that in the, in the district, because it's only at the 80%. You're not going to get 60, 40. And I'm, it's going to be another topic, but, you know, we have an opportunity to work towards a real affordable project in the future. It's another agenda item. But I just want to say, there's nothing affordable in the downtown area is going to get, not downtown, the MBTA community, you're going to have your most affordable housing replaced with higher-income housing. And I do hope you will consider joining with other communities to oppose this unfair one-size-fits-all. Thank you.
Freddie, can you just stay at the podium for a sec? Can we bring the map back up? Because I don't think, did you see this already? We, we just went through a map that Mimi and Colleen and Karina worked on, that I, I feel like is very germane to your comments, Freddie. Yeah. And we're going to have to go through this many times, so no problem. Mimi will correct me if I'm wrong, since she's the one that did it, but the, the yellow parcels on this map are ineligible. And keep bearing in mind that we have a minimum acreage, acreage requirement, and it has to be contiguous. We have quite a complex challenge in front of us, that we hope that the mapping session will be productive and resolving. So I, you know, not disagreeing with or diminishing in any way what you just said, that, you know, it seems like we're working toward in having this sub-district include lots that are quote-unquote builder-ready. However, in the context of the law, which is that it has to be contiguous, and that we have a substantial portion of this sub-district area that is ineligible, we're going to have to put something to, well, let me put it another way. If we're doing our job as a Planning Board and preparing for a vote at Fall Town Meeting with a district, then we have to have something. Does that make sense?
Correct.
Okay.
If I may. Some of the ineligible are choices of the Planning Board that make them ineligible. And the choice to move to eligible, non-eligible land to shift the, to shift the boundary is a Planning Board choice. Deed restricted properties are not ineligible by the law, from my understanding. So that's one. Why not shift it further north? Why not shift it further west? You're going to lots that are builder-ready. That's my point. And I don't hear the conversation about, hey, let's shift it further north. Let's try to shift it further west.
So Freddie, to be clear, we have, we've thrown out different options and looked at different things. We have nothing right now. And the shift to the, to the east was a request to the state, which we haven't heard back on. So the shift is, we haven't done that. These are, are, the board at the, and I think it was agreed upon from the neighborhood, wanted to keep the underlying zoning, which is residential B. And all those lots in orange or yellow don't comply with residential B. It has nothing to do with the deed restriction.
Okay. I wasn't aware of that. They didn't comply for other reasons, but again.
That's the only reason.
Okay. But again, the request is only to shift it east, not to shift it north. We could get more compliant lots, not to shift it west, the same, right? And obviously, I live next to that, but, you know, there was talk about wanting to save our industrial land. So you're not only changing the the district, you're changing, you know, an industrial use, which can have, which can have residential in it. But it was never intended to have 15 units. You're walking away from that type of district in the town when you zone this. So.
So we haven't picked anything, Freddie?
I didn't.
So, so don't map the industrial parcels when, at the mapping session?
My point is I didn't know I had to be concerned about areas not in the district. That was my point.
Well, you don't have to be concerned about areas not in the district. We haven't heard back from the state.
I'm not going to go back and forth, you missed my point.
I did, I got your point. We can't move it north because it has to be from the parking lot, and it's already measured for the, from the northernmost point of that parking lot. And the parking lot goes east and west, we could move it east or west. Well, we were thinking that, but we did not, have not gotten permission from the state to do that. So right now, anything that's to the east, if it goes through the compliance model, it does not show up as being within a half-mile.
Okay, so I'll stand corrected. Petition the state to move it to the west, if you want to be fair. Non, non-ready-to-go lots, that's all I'm saying.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
Freddie brings up a really good point. And that just kind of occurred to me recently, that we, we have said as a board that we don't want to change any underlying zoning, but by putting the districts along Southville Road, we're removing the commercial, some of, if it's voted at town meeting, we would be losing some commercial and industrial parcels. The option for the Blendenwoods neighborhood is all residential. And the whole thing could fit up in Blendenwoods. So that's an interesting thought, because it wouldn't change the, on any underlying zoning, you'd be replacing residential with residential. If you were to put it along Southville, obviously, you're going to lose some of your industrial and commercial lots, because we have discussed as a board that we would not be interested right now in mixed use, its complexity that, you know, we could do frankly later, let's say. But so, but if, if we put the units along Southville, we would be losing some of the commercial and industrial spaces versus up in a neighborhood that's residential for residential.
And, and just because I'm a little bit emotional about this, I want to say I totally honor and respect what you've been trying to do, and I know how difficult it is. But, you know, it would also be helpful, and I don't know if you're planning this eventually, you got a raw deal, first of all, from the state, from the, your consultant. Having every lot have how many units could be in it would be helpful. And I don't know, you know, I know that's a lot of work, because the consultant, in my opinion.
We've already done it. I've already done it for that area.
Consultant should have provided you that before you made your first map. And shame on them. And hopefully you'll get some relief from the state. But I also hope you will consider joining up, not to say we're not going to do this, but let's do it in a way that the towns that know their towns, I don't think anyone who wrote this drove down Southville Road. You know? I guarantee they weren't looking at the type of housing and what they're going to do to affordability in Southborough. And the type of housing we have there allows a family to move in. And the replacement-type housing is unlikely to have the same income-level housing or retired citizens allowed to stay in town. And that's not anyone's idea of good community. You know, so, thank you. Thank you for sharing this map.
Thank you, Freddie. Go ahead.
I just want to make a clarifying question. So Mr. Muria said that we would lose commercial and residential zoning. I don't think that's true. I think this is an overlay district. If someone bought the property for commercial and built commercial, it's still commercial.
Okay, I'd like that clarified. Is that, is that correct? Okay.
Yeah, this is an overlay district. So the, yeah, the commercial and industrial would remain. Although it, residential is the highest and best use of a property.
Yep.
That is true.
If I may double dip, I was going to say just that. As soon as you make it 15 units an acre, no one's going to put a mom-and-pop store in that they can't make a profit on. They're going to build the units.
Anyone else? Mr. Carter?
Paul Carter, Six Hillside Avenue. Just a question, clarification. My understanding is that historical property are not excluded. What, and I guess, that, that's my main question of clarification. So, I mean, from looking at the map, it looks like we're excluding the middle, but I don't think we should be excluding the historical district or any historical property, because my reading of the regulation is historical isn't excluded.
You're correct, that it's not in the regulation. That was the, the request of the neighborhood to respect the historic properties down there. Anyone else? Anyone online? Sure.
Six attendees, no hands raised.
George Bonan, Ferris Development Group, 118 Turnpike. In anticipation for the mapping session that's coming up, can we still, can the public still submit parcels that probably haven't been considered yet?
So the mapping session is for the, within a half-mile of the train station?
Will there be one in the event the board considers properties or parcels outside the half-mile radius? Or at this point, are we not considering?
So we already had those? So we had mapping, the overall mapping sessions for the town, we had two of them. And we came up with three districts. And we were told by our consultant that they were all compliant. And we found out two weeks before town meeting that the district within a half-mile of the train station, because of the keen eye of one of our residents, not the consultant, was not in compliance. So we're trying to, the other two are, so we're trying to re, reconfigure that one to come into compliance, to go before town meeting in September.
I see, all right. Well, I guess I'll leave it at that, and if I have a follow-up, I'll just email Karina, if that's all right.
Okay, sure, thank you. Anyone online? No?
Marney, would you like a copy of the map for your records?
Anyone else? Anything else on that? Okay. Let's move on. Yeah, so we just wanted to run it by the board first, and it will, will be available online.
Well, I think it's in the packet. It's in the meeting packet for this evening with the agenda, yeah. I, I believe it's there. If not, we can get you a PDF. Colleen will put it, I think it's up.
Okay. We moving on, going, going, gone? Next item on the agenda. Chapter, discussion item, Chapter 61A Properties, Northborough Road, right of first refusal. I think this is you, Ms. Gillespie?
I wish I had the prop, I'm putting a new hat on. Hi, I'm Freddie Gillespie, Chair of the Southborough Open Space Preservation Commission. And I just wanted to give the board an update on a joint proposal between the Open Space Preservation Commission and SHOFC, the Southborough Housing Opportunity Partnership Committee. And the issue is the right of first refusal of Chapter 61 land, I think it's A land. I think it's A land, on Northborough Road, right before you go under the turnpike. And I'm just giving you an update so I don't have all the parcel lots and numbers. It's been discussed before. The town gets the right to match the price that the property owner has accepted or is in the process of accepting a deal with a purchaser. And that triggers the right of first refusal. We believe the land is a highest priority for open space protection. The Open Space Commission believes that the best value for the community is to have both open space and community housing, the type of real affordable housing that is needed at below the 80%, plus 80%, maybe even up to 100% or 120%. So it would be a real mixed-use, not mixed-use, mixed-income proposal, depending on how it turns out going down the road. This would require a lot of work to make it feasible. The, we propose, we, I presented this joint collaboration in front of the Select Board, and their response was that we needed, they didn't think it would work and that we needed to find community builders that would actually do this because it never works out. And I'm aware of cases that it has. And SHOPC members have been working to find, in discussions with different builders, to find what criteria they would consider. And the bottom line is they're pretty much thinking of more units than we normally would do in a small Southborough-funded project because they get tax write-offs. Typically, it's 30 to 40 units to make it feasible for them. Towns donate land and some money per unit. A lot to be worked out. The town writes an RFP. You write what you want. It's not someone coming in and, you know, just plopping something down that the town doesn't have input on what is going to happen. The Open Space Commission is also investigating other funding sources. There is CPA funding set aside for both housing and open space. It would take more money than just those buckets, which we would require bonding. And then there would be, depending on if you can split the property or not, which we have heard both sides that we could buy one half and not the other. But others are saying, oh, you have to match the both properties. Still needs to be defined better. But it's just, at this time, when we're talking about affordable housing, this is a real opportunity for this town to commit to something that's well-needed and could be designed in a way, in a section of a land that would be acceptable to many people. And there's always, we would, also, we're planning to reach out to any of butters so they don't just hear about this and that someone's planning to do this. There's always going to be some negative impact, but, or some negative input. But we really want to work towards it. And if this, for whatever reason, doesn't, because the land is expensive. But you know what? In 10 years, we'll look back on this and say, why didn't we do it then? So this is a real opportunity. And we're hoping, I know the planning board was interested. We're hoping that we can get widespread, town-wide support for this. This can help prevent 40Bs going in where people don't want them, where we can choose where we want them if we plan appropriately. So a real collaboration. And my only question is, just wanted to give you an update that it's still moving forward at this point. You had originally sent an email to town council asking what the status is on the, you know, if it was a bona fide offer. Everyone I've spoken to within the land trust and the Chapter 61 community, but not lawyers, have said it wasn't a bona fide offer. In rereading it, I say, oh, maybe it's too bad because we could have matched the offer and, you know, worked towards it over time. But an offer isn't what is needed, which is to buy the money as soon as, you know, have the money and buy the property right away. So is there any interest on the planning board's part? Or should I reach out to town manager to see if we can get town council's update on where they stand with the, I was just thinking you because you had written the original request to get information about. We, I've heard, so rumors, right? I heard that they haven't come back and said that they accepted that it's not a bona fide offer. But I don't, and that if they say it is, then it's still, the clock is ticking. But I'm pretty sure if it's not bona fide, it's not bona fide. So, but nobody's told us that it's not.
Yeah, we haven't heard. Should.
Can we certainly ask the question?
Yeah. We can, we can certainly ask.
And the Open Space Preservation Commission and SHOPC would be very, well, I shouldn't speak for them, but would want to be notified of whatever you hear, of course. And speaking for the Open Space Commission, we would be very grateful if you did that. Thank you.
Thank you, Freddie. Should be noted that Northborough Town Meeting just purchased a right of first refusal property for open space and affordable housing. So it can be done.
Yes. Can you, what does a community builder mean?
So a community builder, actually, I first heard about them, I think, through the gentleman sitting to your left. Jesse, when he was on the CPC and we were looking at how to make these types of projects work. Community builders are, and I might get this wrong, so correct me, Jesse. They're a quasi, like, nonprofit builder that works with communities to get these housing proposals built. And then often, what is great about them is, when we were looking at it before our housing authority said, we can't handle any more units. We can't take care of them. And the benefit of these is they often, not only do they build them, they manage them. So all of that pressure is take, if they're rentals, right? And it's taken off the community. They, what they, there are massive tax breaks, I shouldn't say massive, but they're big enough to get these projects done, tax breaks, that they can apply for, that lowers the cost to them. There's always a component of the communities pitching in. So they pitch in funds. They usually give the land and some money per unit. And when you look at the overall benefit for the cost, it's not spending $500,000 to get one unit for 80% median income, which is close to $100,000 for a single person. This would allow, you know, lower income. And it's not a, I keep calling it a proposal because I don't want to use the word project, because these are not projects. These allow housing for people who are in our, living in our community now but have no place to go if things, you know, as they age out or as, you know, somebody loses a job or something. I mean, this is done in communities around the Commonwealth. And I have seen examples in towns like Chatham and Wellesley that are, you know, the type of housing that this town could embrace. And I don't want to sound snobby, but, you know, there's a pre-concept of what a larger, affordable unit would look like. But they're building different types, and it could work for Southborough. We won't know unless we investigate. And I'm very pleased and proud to be part of this collaboration with the housing and the open space community working together. So.
Thanks.
Mimi, can I add something? So just to kind of piggyback a little bit on what Freddie's saying for anybody from the public that might be listening here tonight, just to stress a couple of points. When you look at the affordable housing projects that go into town, it's at an 80% AMI, which is the median income. And Freddie is correct. It's between 80 and $100,000. So the people, that's not diversity, and that's not equity in housing. When you look at your firefighters, your teachers that make under this amount and don't qualify, how is that diversity? How is that equity? How is that not allowing people that have so much more to give to our community an opportunity to be able to be here? I think we have a great opportunity here. And, you know, it's great, you know? One unit here, one unit there is good because it does help somebody. But when we have an opportunity, 30-plus units to truly help the mom that's working in a grocery store that can't afford for her kids to live in a town like Southborough, and that's all she wants is what's best for them. And we have an opportunity to invest and to provide this is something, I think, it's shameful that we don't explore fully. So, thank you. Thank you, Freddie, for all you're doing.
You're welcome. Can I follow up on, there is nothing wrong with 80% median income. It's more affordable. But we have to recognize that the only more affordable housing we're building in this town is at the 80%. All of the subdivision ones, not that there were that many, but there were some. And all of the 40Bs in town are 80% median income. And, no, that's a, that's a bar that's really hard to hit. We do have the senior housing. I believe there's like a five-year wait to get in there. And you have to be at that lower income level when you apply. Who's planning to stay poor? Where are they going to live? I shouldn't say poor, but who's planning to have that limited resources for five years? How are they going to live until they qualify to get in? And you're going to plan for five years from now? I'm going to need it? And you have to need it now when you apply. You know, it's just not working for this community. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So Freddie, other than a letter requesting a status update to, well, to ask town administrator, if we can ask town council, or is there another ask?
Yes. Why don't, would you take a vote to say you support this concept of this idea and for the work we're doing to move forward?
Sure.
Thank you.
So moved.
Do I have to second it?
Yeah.
I second.
Oh.
Wow.
Good point. Sorry, I retract that. The motion is that the planning board support and concept the collaboration of SHOPC, Open Space Commission, was there another one?
Just preservation and.
And CPC, in the pursuit of purchasing via right of first refusal, Chapter 61A property at Northborough Road.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mimi, I have, I have one thing.
Yes.
If we're writing a letter, if we could just, is this a letter to the Select Board? Is that correct? Or just a vote?
Just a vote.
I would love to send a letter because this hits several items, goals, and recommendations on the master plan. The master plan is for the next generation. And I think that this really shows what collaboration can work, which has been very difficult, and that was a big emphasis on the master plan that you led. And also, these are big goals that we hardly have the opportunity to make them come to fruition. And so they're there. They're not for us to debate whether we should have affordable housing or whether we should have open space. The master plan committee has already agreed, and they're goals, and we can hit these goals and recommendations. So I would really like to write a letter, even to the Select Board, to show them the movement that's afoot, which is really wonderful, and also the support from this board in that we're meeting our master, we would be potentially, we would like to meet our master plan goals.
I kind of need to make a correction. It's the Open Space Preservation Commission and SHOPC. I was adding the preservation in to the Open Space Commission's name. I wasn't trying to imply that the CPC is.
Okay, yep, strike CPC from the motion, please.
They're supportive, but they're not collaborating.
We got it.
Until we submit an application. Thank you. Can I sit down now?
Yeah, and I'll ask you another question the minute you sit down. No, go ahead.
So do we amend to add that to a letter and a vote?
Sure.
Sure.
So to write a, to write a letter in support. And Mr. Maria, were you volunteering?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll help you. I'll help Karina. I'll start, I'll draft something.
Okay. So any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stan, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demiria, yes.
Rashu, yes.
Thank you. So I just, I just want to circle back to MBTA just on the administration of the mapping session. So we're going to do it the same way with the tables and the big maps and have all the information on the maps? And do we want to have a couple of sample zones? Okay. So I can work on, I have one. I can work on what Mr. Maria was suggesting. And if anybody else wants to suggest something.
And then also, we need any outreach to, you know, in this case, it's the half-mile area within this, you know, half-mile of the station as opposed to the whole town. Are there any suggestions on how you would like us to outreach? We have some ARPA funds remaining. We could do a postcard to the half-a-mile. Do you think that's a good idea, too? A postcard similar?
I know I'm supposed to be making, and it will happen this week, the executive summary, kind of the longitudinal what's happening so people can pick up and understand what's happening with MBTA and where we are. Is there a way we can work together? So if the outreach goes on, it's almost like a pre-read, so they don't get it the day before, they can go into the website and it's clear? Because I think what we heard is the website's kind of a disaster in the sense that no one can find anything. So I think we have to, like, set up the website to make it very clear where they can go. When would the outreach go out? Probably as soon as possible, right?
Right, for June 3rd. You'd want it at least a week, so that's.
Like this week?
End of this week.
It didn't take long to do the last one. I mean, I can stuff that.
But would we go to the printer to print the cards? Would you suggest we would have to get the cards printed at the printer?
Right.
And it's not as many as last time, so we have.
Well, I had, I did all of this Southville area.
You did that last time?
Yeah, I think it was over, over 300?
All right, we'll confirm. So we'll plan on a postcard out to the half-a-mile area, station area of residents. Maybe we could include 11 by 17 or even a letter size of that map that will be presented on the table so they could already think about it, maybe? I don't know, but.
I think if there's a website, like, my thought is if you can, like, literally, let's set up the website so that you take a picture of it and show them where to get the information, they can go to it.
That's right, that's much better.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we have to, we have to be able to put that together.
Yeah. So that'll be a priority. Yeah. We have a lot of prior, you know, startup information there, which has to kind of be saved, but can be put in the background. It's a different link. But there's different categories, like the request to the state for the changes and now this current mapping session. I, we'll have some ideas. The new website software is a little more, yeah, it's not as intuitive. We'll get that there, though.
Okay, good.
So a postcard and a website.
Does that answer all your questions?
Yes. And you think about seven, same, same, same number of tables, probably, to be safe. If we have an extra table and it doesn't get filled, so be it. We just don't want to be short a table. So maybe the seven tables I think we had last time? We had, I think we had eight. Eight tables? Okay. Can't remember anymore. Okay.
Colleen, can I come by tomorrow, like, at lunch, 12 to 1? And we could just work out on the website stuff? And then you'll, we'll have that, and we'll get the graphics done for the postcard.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. The next item on the agenda, discussion item, Residents at Park Central, 40B. I don't think there's anything new on this. It's before the ZBA on July 17th, 2024, to report back on what's going on on court. I think we just leave it on here in case there's any update on it.
Yeah.
Any question or comment on that? So moving on, the next item on the agenda is a discussion item, 120 Turnpike Road, 40B. And in, in your pack, it was a letter that we received from, well, Jesse and I received from Mr. Ferris suggesting a meeting between us, Ms. Cook, Mr. Dennington and Mr. Williams. And I'm certainly not comfortable speaking for the board. And so I shared that letter. My, my thought is if that is what they, that Mr. Ferris would like to move forward with, then he needs to file a modification for the, to the site plan. Yes.
So I don't have a, a problem with us discussing the concept prior to that. I mean, that's not, that's something the planning board has done many times in the past. Rather than having a proponent actually go through the filing process for us to hash out conceptually. Is that what you're here for, sir?
I wasn't sure what was to be discussed today as the agenda.
Okay. Are you?
This is what I expected, so.
Are you familiar with the correspondence from Mr. Ferris? Okay, do you want to step to them? Go ahead and introduce yourself.
George Bonan, Assistant General Counsel of the Ferris Development Group.
So do you want to take us through this?
Um, I mean, it's
Concept?
Self-explanatory. I, I'm not sure which of the board members had seen the correspondence, but it basically suggested that we would be able to relocate the proposed forty B site, or building rather, to the lower part of one-twenty on the existing parking lot. In doing that, we would be able to preserve the six-point-two acres that was conditioned in the twenty-nineteen special permit and not affect it, except for maybe minor areas where there might be a dog park or a playground necessary. But in order to do this, we would have to get relief from the board in terms of parking at the very least. So Mr. Ferris's correspondence was to Madam Chair Latrell and Board Member Stein, assuming that they would share with everyone, and I think everyone has seen it at this point. But there it is on the screen. But this is just one concept that would allow us to bring the, the building down to the lower level of the parking lot at one-twenty Turnpike and basically preserve the six-point-two acres, which has been so so opposed on building. So this is what we're proposing, and we're just trying to get your take on it, basically. Would, would the board support this idea? Would they be in favor of granting the necessary relief for us to do this?
So just to be clear, so if you move that building, the six-point-two acres would be preserved? Because the email said might.
I, it meant might as in if this were to be approved, yes. The six-point-two would be preserved if this, or a, or a like plan would be approved.
So if we, we make a condition, if we, if you guys come back to us with this modification?
Yes.
And we basically insisted in the, in the plans, it's clearly marked as donated per the previous site plan agreement or something along those lines.
Sure.
Whatever the legal ease is, that you guys would be able to move forward with that. And the relief is on the parking? I think that's the part I think I need a little.
Yeah, sure. I think it was spelled out in the email, but I'll, just for the sake of the hearing, I'll, I'll once again say it. Right now, there's about five-hundred forty spaces of parking on this one-twenty parcel, all of which is for the two buildings at one-twenty Turnpike and one-eighteen Turnpike. Now, all those spaces are required for the buildings to be in parking compliance. So however, only about one-ten of the spaces are used, so practically we are well overparked. We have plenty parking. We want to bring the proposed forty B building down to the lower level parking lot and have a shared parking concept, uh, which would dedicate parking to both office buildings and the forty B site.
So what happened, so, I mean, you guys must have some vacancy in the commercial space, and that's
There's, there's.
Parking isn't being used.
There's some vacancy in the one-eighteen building. I think we're about thirty to forty percent occupied. However, if you take our existing numbers and let's say double them to two-hundred twenty cars a day being parked there, we're still, we're still well overparked. There's just.
That's, I mean, if you're forty, I mean, if you, let's say conservatively, you're, you're forty percent occupied, then the parking would more than double.
Well, no, no, that's in one building. This is, we, we are fully occupied in one-twenty Turnpike and forty percent occupied in one-eighteen.
So do you have, sorry.
So the site in general, both office buildings are roughly sixty to seventy percent occupied. So a conservative number would be doubling the amount of parking spaces used during the day, mind you. What we're proposing here is a residential building, and the parking would most likely occur during the evenings, after work hours. If, if this is a perfect example of how shared parking could work.
So how have you guys analyzed this? Have you had somebody sitting in the parking lot, you know?
We.
Making note of?
We have literally counted the, the cars that are parked there. You know, we, we do a lot of things to the site, so it's a, it's a statistic we're well, we're familiar with. So we do know the amount of spots that are used on a daily basis. Of course, that's an average, but yes, that's how we did it.
Would you be adding any parking at all?
No. In fact, some spots will be removed, like you see where the forty B building overlaps like ten spots, ten spots, I'd say. Those would be removed.
That's it for me for now.
Ms. Houlihan?
I think the other thing you're asking for is the waiver on the height. So right now, we have a three-story minimum in all of town, so you're asking for six stories.
That would be a waiver we'd be asking for regardless. The building was originally proposed at four stories. But yes, we are now asking for a six-story building in order to make the footprint of the building smaller to fit in that area. So our, our thought was make the building taller, smaller footprint, and you can put it in an area like where you see right there on the site plan.
So I, I'm just saying we have one ladder truck. If there's a, we have one ladder truck, and that was a really hard thing for us, our town to get. So like that, like even just to put out a fire, you'd need two fire trucks. We don't have that. So I, I'm not, I'm not so inclined on a six-story. I guess my question is, is that, that that's from the perspective of Ferris Development is six stories makes it economical for you to do a forty B?
Yes, it does. I, I, I don't want to say we're stuck on that number, but this is what we've proposed thus far. And I kind of wanted to hear your take on it, you know, and that's a very good point you made, and we'll discuss it tomorrow.
Yeah, I think the other thing is just sticking it back there too, is just fire access would be another issue.
And of course, the fire department will weigh in on that.
Right.
They'll, they'll, I know, for example, they want more than one-way or one-side access. I've been dealing with this with another building in town. And they are asking for three-side access. They don't necessarily need to access the rear, but they do want three-side access at a minimum. So if we do move forward with a proposal like this, we ensure that three sides would be able to be accessed by an emergency vehicle.
Have you guys already gone to the public safety with ZBA?
No.
That hasn't happened.
This, this concept plan is what you're seeing.
Before, before this, before, I mean, you guys had hearings with ZBA, right?
We've had hearings with the ZBA, but no, I, I don't believe we've had discussions with the fire department or public safety.
Okay.
Those are my concerns. I mean, ideally, if you guys could get it to like our three-story minimum, I'd be much more inclined to support something like that. But, you know, again, like it's challenging. I don't, I don't know if people would even want to live in a parking lot, but that's not for me to decide.
Mr. Maria?
How are you thinking about the land donation?
Well, we would, if, it, it would be conditioned, I'm assuming, like the twenty-nineteen permit, you know, except it would be followed through this time. That's basically it, and you, the select board would have to make motions to accept it, and we would follow procedure and ensure that it is donated.
So I think we need to subdivide the lot. Is that correct? Or Karina, can you help me understand? So we would need subdivision control here.
You're saying you, you would need to subdivide the lot in order for the approval of this forty B, not necessarily for the forty B itself?
Not related to the forty B.
Okay.
The donation of the parcel either. I think, I believe it would have to be an A and R, but you don't have access. So I think that you would have to subdivide the lot. So I just want to make sure I'm correct about this, because there's not going to be any access or anything. There's.
So there would have to be a parcel for the forty B?
Yes.
And the donated land could be A and R'd because it's being combined with the Brignick Hill Conservation Land, which has frontage.
Oh, so it's two applications? The A and R, first it gets removed from one-eighteen, one-twenty, and then it gets added to Brignick?
Well, so they, so they could A and R that and say this parcel is joining the, the other parcel. We've done those A and Rs before.
Okay, so I'm just wondering if it's coming back to the planning board? So is the A and R, we've heard town council say that.
So that would be part of the, the modification of the site plan, I believe.
We could do it all at one time.
I see.
So you would come back with an A and R for the land to be conveyed to the town? And then I would imagine there would be a modification required for the remaining site of one-eighteen, one-twenty, not only for the donation of the open space area, but also for the property or the portion of the property that would be the forty B locus would be removed from the original site.
Correct. That would be a modified site plan.
And I think that modification, if I'm not wrong, that, that, the forty B parcel being parsed out would be under the ZBA as part of the forty B for that locus. But the part where you convey this approximate six-point-two acres, I don't know if it's the same, but it would.
It, it wouldn't be the same. As you can see, we, we still would need some of that area to create a dog park and a playground. But they would be open space amenities, you know.
And you also push the line forward too, right? The line used to be back here somewhere.
Yes, yes.
So you moved, you know, you, the hatched area is, but you wouldn't be including this. So you need a modification to the old site plan for removing this open space from that site plan?
Yes.
And then also because the forty B piece would be, you know, away from, you know, removed from the site plan as well, even though it's on the parking lot. You would A and R that under the ZBA?
We're going to be submitting modified site plans to reflect our new design and concept.
Yeah.
Along with it, most likely a conditional A and R, subdividing the six-point-two acres that you see on this concept plan.
Conditional on the forty B?
Yes, on the approval of forty B. That's the reason we're doing this.
Do you know how much smaller that area is now without the dog park? Do you have a sense? Is it five acres now? Is it, is it under six acres?
I don't. I, I'm not sure. I don't, I don't want to commit to a number and give any.
Okay, so you just don't, it's not.
No, I'm not.
I just didn't see the.
No. This is just a very, this is a very preliminary concept plan.
And this pond is a protected resource, right? It's a.
Mm-hmm, correct.
Yep.
Okay. And then this is your septic system?
Yes.
Out of the septic?
Well, a sand filter.
For septic?
Yes.
Not for stormwater?
Correct.
Right.
Ms. Brashu?
Thank you. Just a couple of thoughts. Obviously, one was the resource area that the pond provides. I'd be really interested before this board pursued it any further to hear what CONCOM had to say, if it would even be allowable. For one point, I went on the GIS and I, I pulled up the GIS and I see how the wetlands pool into that area.
My, if I could touch on that briefly.
Go ahead.
My understanding is that you can go right up to the wetlands area because we only have to adhere to the Wetlands Protection Act, not necessarily local CONCOM regulations.
Okay.
So that would be allowable.
Okay. Next, I would be really curious. There are still some abutters that our properties are going to touch or get very close to this. I'd be curious whether they can see a three-story building now and how a six-story building might affect the views from their own property.
Um, I think there might be only one abutter that may have a view. I'm unsure if they'd be able to see it, whether it's three stories, four stories, five stories or six stories. There, there's a lot of trees in between their house and this property, so I'm really unsure. But we could, if, if they are still concerned, which I'm unsure if they are, we can try a balloon test, as we've suggested in the past, and see where that goes.
Okay. And then lastly, I don't know if doing a six-story building is going to create a precedent going forward for any future forty Bs that may come into town? Because if you allow one, I mean, again, I don't know, but these are just some of my concerns on doing this. It's, it's not saying I'm against continuing a discussion on this, but I think that there's just a lot of questions more so than personally I can give you tonight. But I'm certainly interested in exploring this further.
Of course, and, and I, just to touch on the precedent topic, I think most boards and board members would agree that nothing that's ever approved sets precedent at this level. It's, sometimes it's a one, one-time thing and that's it. It doesn't necessarily give the next person the right to do the same thing. In my experience.
I think, I think it does open the door, though. You all set, Ms. Brashu? So, thank you very much. I think that the preservation of the six-point-two acres is very important in the willingness to, to rethink the project. I, I really appreciate. Just wondering, the, the parking garage was over on the other side.
Correct.
And, and it was in a three, three-hundred-and-fifteen and a half by one-forty-eight footprint as opposed to seventy-six by one-eighty, if it was a.
Much larger.
Yeah, so it didn't, wouldn't need to be six stories, I don't think.
If, possibly, and, and we did do that, we've, we've toyed with the idea of putting it on the left side of the property. And we kind of did a overlay of the proposed building versus what the, the parking garage would have been, and the parking garage was much bigger. You're right. But we found the best use of the property would be to put that proposed forty B on the right side. That way you would be able to keep all that existing parking. Don't forget, the, the parking garage was for parking, so it was replacing the lost parking with added parking. We're not doing the same thing here. So in order to keep and maintain the parking levels at what they are, we wanted to put it on the right side of the parcel.
Oh, okay. And so the access to that building would just be through the parking lot?
Correct. There would obviously be access easements granted. And yes, exactly.
And so you can get cars going in both directions through the parking lot?
The, on the far left side, there would be an access road. And if this needs more attention, which it sounds like it may, we would create another, we would create access roads where needed in order to access the forty B site.
Okay.
Or access easements. If we can do it by keeping the parking, we'd preferably do that.
Yeah, I, I'd like to see, you know, a compromise proposal move forward. Yes, ma'am.
Freddie Gillespie, Chair of the Open Space Preservation Commission. We have a letter we wrote right before this meeting, and I'll send it to you later. To the planning board, May twentieth, twenty twenty-four. The Open Space Preservation Commission, OSPC, met today, Monday, May twentieth, and reviewed the one-twenty Turnpike Road concept plan of alternative layouts, five-eleven-twenty-four, that was submitted to the planning board chair. We would like to share our appreciation to Mr. Ferris for working to address the many concerns we had regarding the original layout of the project and his commitment to adhere to the legal requirements to give six-point-two acres to the town. and his commitment to adhere to the legal requirements to give 6.2 acres to the town. We find that the relocation of the building is a great improvement to the light and car exhaust impacts to the conservation land and will alleviate many of the detrimental ecological fallout from the original plan. Following up on the required donation of the additional 6.2 acres will provide a beneficial buffer to the land from the building. While at six stories, the new building is much taller than the original proposed one, it is at about 30 feet lower elevation, so about equal height to the conservation land and further back from the property boundary, so the light pollution will be much less. The visual sightline impact should also be greatly reduced, if not eliminated, for walkers of the Breakneck Hill Trails seeking respite in nature. We understand there will likely be lots of considerations that need to be reviewed by other boards, committees, and citizens. But for the open space values, we find this to be a big improvement and support moving forward with a compromise solution. We recognize this is only a concept plan, and we look forward to review more detailed plans as the compromise moves forwards. Respectfully submitted on behalf of the OSPC, Freddie Gillespie, Chair, South Borough Open Space Preservation Commission.
Thank you, Ms. Gillespie.
And I want to say that we do not undertake this lightly. We have recognized that we also, this plan does not give us complete view of how it will impact the conservation values. And we also are clear, we're the Open Space Preservation Commission. We're not the parking or the building height or the abutters. We we would certainly have personal opinions on those maybe, but our commission is looking at the impact to the conservation land. You will note that the conservation land does abut that lot. The dotted line is a little bit on the far right, there's a little bit of the conservation land that goes below the dot or above the dotted 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 line. So there is still some area of the conservation land that can be impacted by the building, but it's not the bulk of the building being right up against the, can you see where I'm talking about? Right, go north of where your little dot, right in there. That is, I believe, still conservation land. So we're not denying that there is some impact. But you have to see where the other building was. It was, as far as height, views from the conservation land, it was further up. So we counted the the contour lines, and it was like about 30 feet lower now. So the views will be different. One of the big concerns was the exhaust with the parking right up against the conservation land. It's no more impactful now than it is with an office building. That will be reduced. So we think there's many challenges to moving this forward, but that's not our, that's not our job. Our job is looking at the conservation values that are not going to be impacted by this new location. And then, taking off my open space hat, I will say, I do have concerns about the neighbor's view. And I did drive over to a neighborhood and drove up a hill to see if you could see it. And, you know, there's a new neighborhood up off Mount Vickery, Elabella, maybe? So I drove up there and you couldn't, you know, the the issue also would be, how many trees are evergreen and when the leaves fall, I mean, does that change? And certainly there's other neighborhoods, but particularly up on that hill overlooking it, I don't think you're going to be able to see it. So I think using balloons is what we had recommended originally. You have some concern about that tall of a building with migrating birds slamming into the windows and what kind of lighting you would end up using, what kind of things we could do to make it better. Or certainly reducing the height is, you know, I'm sure going to be a hot topic. But for right now, I just wanted to share that the Open Space Commission supports moving forward on this concept, this location. And one thing about having it in that corner, the residents, instead of, yeah, for us, it looks like it's in the middle of a parking lot, but I don't know how much the pond can be a natural area for them to see. And also, they're also abutting up against conservation land in that corner, especially once the 6.2 acres is given as required. And we'd also have comments on how the deed transfer of the land, when you get to that point, would go. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Carrie Probst, 31 Woodland Road. My husband and I represent a group of Southborough residents who are abutters, users and friends of the Breakneck Hill Conservation Land. Can you, our group is formerly known as Friends of Breakneck Hill. Our website is breakneckhill.org. My husband, Matt Probst, would normally be here, but he's a member of the Municipal Technology Committee, which has a conflicting meeting this evening. We want to share with you the results of a recent survey we conducted among our group members related to the potential 118, 120 Turnpike Road project. The overwhelming majority, over 90% of our group members, stated that they do not support any compromise that involves the donation of less than 6.2 acres of land to the town as required by the already executed 2019 site plan of 118, 120 Turnpike Road. Donation of the land in accordance with the executed site plan should be considered the minimum baseline foundation for any discussion and plans moving forward. We've heard about the that the developer has started to explore options that would allow for the donation of 6.2 acres and the construction of an apartment building closer to the existing commercial structures. We want to publicly thank the developer for exploring options to find a potential win-win solution that will provide 40B housing and will protect the conservation land. We request that the Planning Board be open to explore site plan modifications, provided that the proposed proposed modifications do not compromise the integrity of the Breakneck Hill, inclusive of the donated 6.2 acres. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Step on up, Mr. Carter.
Paul Carter, 6 Hillside Avenue. I think it's very positive and that a compromise is is going to be pursued here on the part of the developer and on the part of the Planning Board. It will require flexibility on the part of the Planning Board and the Zoning Board of Appeals in terms of dealing with this site. It's very challenging because of all the different history and the uses. I still think it's clear that a definitive subdivision needs to be proposed. It's needed definitive subdivision to break off the six acres. It's been talked about as a site, but there is no lot for the 40B yet until this is subdivided. You you're going to need a subdivision in order to to separate out 120 and your other one up front and and the 40B. I I don't think there's any reason to dance around the definitive subdivision anymore. I don't think it's a negative for the developer. I think that there would be very waivers as part of it, but I still feel that the property and separating this out and having these three different things happening need a subdivision. And I think that the Town Council agreed that a preliminary subdivision needs to be part of this. And in terms of, the other thing I guess I'd say is, you know, this is great in concept, but any of the specifics, there's a, there are a lot of issues with, and I would encourage the board not to be tied down to, yes, the building over there, six stories, you know, we agree in concept. My opinion is that six stories would set a precedent for the town. The the other 40B that's being proposed, they're showing four stories. If you give him six stories, they're going to want six stories. So I think the precedent of three stories in Southborough, the only place that doesn't have, that has four stories is Madison Place. So that's my opinion about the 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 building. If there is extra parking, then I would suggest that the building be extended to the west, that it be three or four stories. And if there's extra parking, it looks like there would be room in order to extend the building, so there didn't have to be six stories. The other thing I would say is that right now we're showing less than six acres because of the septic. I think that septic is is such a critical issue here. They're going, they're right next to their sand filters, that's the the septic for the offices. I think they need to to include some kind of a layout that has been minimally engineered where the septic would be for that, to reserve that large area of the public park and the playground for septic, realizing that that's all going to be cleared. So that corner, now, instead of having the building right up against the trail, we're going to have a a large field. So I think that something more realistic and a little bit engineered for the septic needs to be done in order to to move forward with a layout here. And I guess I would like to say that if the parking garage was a good location for the parking garage, then it may be a good location for the 40B. I think squeezing in the 40B between the sand filter and that pond might not be realistic. You know, talking about having fire access around that building, you know, you need another 12 feet all the way around, it has to be graded. So there's a number of things. This concept is great, and the concept of moving the building out of the 6.2 acres is great and a great compromise. And I think the ZBA and the Planning Board, you know, are, if this is the way it goes, are going to be able to revise the existing special permit, are going to be able to put together and provide input to the ZBA so that there's a good compromise. I wouldn't agree that what's shown here is anything that the town is going to be able to get behind. In concept, yes, in none of the specifics, no.
Thank you, sir. And you have, Ms. LeVale?
Hi, I have nothing to add to what everyone's already said. I agree with all the statements made. Just one quick question for clarification. I happened to be getting off the Mass Pike when you were describing the new the new plan. And as you get off the Mass Pike in Framingham, coming onto Route 9, going west, like right in front of you, right, are those apartment buildings, the ones that kind of all dot along the reservoir? And the one right in front of the Pike happens to be six floors. So if anybody wants, like, is having a hard time getting their heads around that, that that might be a good focal point next time you're on 9. What I noticed, and my question was, that underneath the first floor, there's actually parking. And I just want to clarify, you're not planning, like, when you say six floors, floor one would be on the ground, no parking underneath it?
Correct, there would be no parking in the footprint.
Okay, great, thank you, that's all.
Thank you.
Kristen, before you go, can you just identify your residence?
I have a record with you guys. Kristen LeVale, 12 Southwood Drive.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Anything else?
So do you feel like you've gotten the feedback? I mean, it seems to me as a member that you have some semblance of a consensus of support. So what, do you have any other questions right now?
No, very different from the last hearing we had. But no, I did. I think it was the comments and feedback were all very productive, and I'm glad to hear that some of the abutters and residents of the town and some of the commissions and boards are showing and expressing support in relocating the building, and that means a lot to us, and we'll move forward based on this feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. Certainly.
So just one last comment. This would be, in my opinion, the correct, what we did tonight, having a discussion in a public meeting with the input of residents, other commissions, and the entire board, this is the correct process. I feel very strongly that that is a much better path for you and us and the town than trying to organize meetings outside of the public forum.
Understood.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jesse. Here, here to that. Anything else on that, any more comments? Okay, on to the next item on the agenda. Planning Board Appointments and Recommendations.
Does the assignments of Chair and Vice Chair not meet that agenda item? How does that not fit that?
It's on here.
Well, typically on the agenda, we write Planning Board Organization after the election.
But why don't we just do it?
But I I don't think, it is in the in the meeting packet, this chart that Colleen prepared, which identifies all the different.
Yeah, I think we're safe to do that. Does anybody disagree with that? You disagree with that?
No, I don't. I see it's on here, I didn't realize it was on here.
I didn't mean to hijack them.
So during this past election, Marnie Houlihan has remained seated on the Planning Board. Congratulations. And I can say as, you know, town planner here for seven years now, what, the Planning Board has been extremely supportive and assisting the Planning Department in all kinds of efforts. And Marnie has stepped right up and you filled so many things that we needed to do, that I'm really glad that you're here. I don't think people really understand how much goes into being a Planning Board member. I see it now because I'm a town planner. But previously, having presented before boards, I didn't think that there was this level of effort for Planning Board members. And there really is a strong and big effort that you all provide to help us as the planning staff, so thank you. And I'm glad you're here. So typically after an election, the Planning Board has to organize for the year to identify and vote a Chair and a Vice Chair.
So move to reinstate permanent, no. Mimi Latrell is Chair of the Plan.
Oh, nominate, yeah.
Nominate.
Yeah, so you're supposed to nominate and then.
Okay.
Vote.
The the motion is to nominate Mimi Latrell.
She has to accept.
Of the Planning Board.
I second that nomination.
Do you accept?
I I gratefully accept, I'd be happy to do it unless somebody else wants to nominate someone else.
See that happen.
So I guess I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Latrell abstain.
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demaria, yes.
Brashio, absolutely yes.
I make a motion for Jesse Stein to be nominated as our Vice Chair.
Accept.
You need a second.
I second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Yay, Latrell, yes.
Stein abstain.
Houlihan, yes.
Demaria, yes.
Brashio, yes.
Thanks, everybody, appreciate it.
That was easy.
So would you like to? Should we proceed down the list for what we know already? So the next thing is the Deed Research Subcommittee, which are one-year terms, currently filled by Mimi, Jesse, and Freddie Gillespie. Where did she go?
I think she left.
I think she expressed to me during planning hours that she was still interested in participating in that. And just note that that Subcommittee is, doesn't lapse until the Planning Board dissolves it. Previously, it was, there was a set time, but they're good, we don't have to reestablish the committee. So we need a motion to appoint the three members of the Deed Research Subcommittee, Mimi Latrell, Jesse Stein, and Freddie Gillespie.
I make a motion to appoint Mimi Latrell, Jesse Stein, and Frederica Gillespie to the Deed Research Subcommittee for a one-year term.
I second.
I have a motion and a second, do I have? Oh, is that?
You have a second, any further discussion? I got a little power.
I was just going to say that this has been going on for a few years. We had, like, all the subdivisions are downloaded online, and there's this database, so it has all the permits, all the deeds, all the open space, all the protection of the open space. We had this done several years ago, and Mass Audubon had done it, and they they were looking for some, we were looking for someone to update it, because we've had new subdivisions, and they don't do it anymore, and it's been difficult to find, but I think Karina has some leads on a few. So this may actually go. So this may actually go forward this year.
And it is the Opera Funding, so we just have to contract with somebody prior to June thirtieth, but then they can proceed with the work for the rest of the year. So.
So we'll get the whole thing updated. So Latrell, yes?
You don't have.
For Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demiria, yes.
Bracio, yes.
Okay. Then um next on this, we identified Public Works Planning Board, but those don't expire for one year and two years, which is Debbie and Sam Stivers. Um, the Master Plan Implementation Committee, um, I think we heard back from Sam Stivers, and Debbie, you could speak for yourself here, but we haven't heard back from Catherine McKee, um, William Warren, and Judith Watson yet. Do you know?
I, I know Judith is on her vacation, so she's not, um, not back till June. Um, I, uh, we do know that Cat McKee intends to step down. She hasn't formally because she's just aware that she doesn't want to leave the committee in a lurch. Um, but she'll need to um formally resign for us to post the vacancy. So we're sort of in this catch twenty-two. Um, Sam and I maybe have thought of a few folks, I'm reaching out informally, but it's, um, I think we're gonna have to post the vacancy. So I know for Cat McKee for sure, and I don't know about Will Warren.
So we have time before June thirtieth for the next meeting.
Yeah.
To still coordinate that.
On the seventeenth.
Yeah. Okay, good.
So you have a couple leads on people that may be interested?
Yes.
Okay, good.
And then we have um Planning Board Recommendations to the Select Board who appoints these roles. And um we have the Community Preservation Committee for three years. Currently, um, the Planning Board representative to CPC is Lisa Bracio, and um it's a three-year term. So if you'd like to continue or?
Do you need a motion for that and a vote?
Yes, to recommend Lisa to the Select Board to be appointed by them.
So moved?
Seconded.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Latrell, yes.
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demiria, yes.
Bracio abstain.
Uh, just, can I just continue, Karina? Pretty straightforward.
Yes.
So the motion is to uh recommend reapportment to the Metro West Regional Collaborative, MWRC, for one year, Mimi Latrell.
Second.
Unless anyone else wants to, I'll be happy to. Seeing none, all in favor, Latrell, yes.
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demiria, yes.
Bracio, yes.
I'd prefer not to make the next uh motion.
I can make it, yes. Uh, uh, Planning Board Recommendation to Sel- uh, Select Board for the um South Borough Housing Opportunity Partnership Committee, SHOPC, uh, Planning Board Rep to SHOPC is Jesse Stein.
My second.
And you wish to continue, Mr. Stein?
Yeah, I accept.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Latrell, yes.
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demiria, yes.
Bracio, yes.
Uh, the uh motion is to recommend reapportment to the Metro Area Planning Midi.
That's not needed yet, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's one. You're good for another year there.
Retret that, and then move along to um the motion to recommend to the Select Board reapportment of Lisa Bracio to the Twenty-One Highland Street Future Use Committee for one year.
Second.
Do you wish to continue, Ms. Bracio?
Yeah.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Latrell, yes.
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demiria, yes.
Bracio, yes.
Will we do minutes? Is that right? Are we gonna do the planners?
The planners, next item, planners report.
Uh, I already mentioned earlier about the um May thirtieth, eleven to two P M opportunity to um go in person to um the ME, M E R C Annual Conference for Housing with um Secretary Ed Augustus from the EO H L C. So if you have any questions on that, let me know. There is continued efforts for a, uh, I forget what it's called, a Quick Clicks Civic Plus, Click Fix, um, kind of a complaint line onto the website, so continued research is there. You might have more to say to that, but I think.
The C Click Fix, they have it in um Marlboro and.
Natick.
Natick. But you, there's a Q R code if there's an issue, a pothole or something. You download a picture and it puts a pin on the map from your uh G I S location on your cell phone, and it, they goes to the um D P W, and then it's on the map so everyone can see and follow up how long it took and keeps track of all the, the complaints and comments. It's very, very cool. So we were looking for something on the website that residents could offer comment or, you know, concerns or enforcement issues. And um Bill Kundif at the D P W is looking into this. See, just, yes, that's what it was.
So um we did talk about the Opera Funds. Uh, regarding the Opera Funds, we have some additional opportunity um for some enhancements to the G I S mapping, um, including toggling the zoning, um, potentially putting wetland boundaries on the G I S mapping, and then also um tree inventory is coming in the future. That's not quite there yet. Um, there was one other item, oh, fixing the open space. There's some errors in some of the open spaces, so I'm working on that. Um, we're getting the deed research database update. Um, I have a couple of leads there, so that'll be a good thing. And then we can, we're going to use some of the Opera money that's left for the M V T A postcard. So that's where that sits.
Um, I just have to say I love the new G I S. It's really cool and very easy to work with.
Yeah, we've been, we've been trying to get some stuff done on that.
Um.
The only thing I'll say about the G I S is if you type into the search bar on the main page, you can't access it from there. It just, it doesn't come up. You actually have to go into Concom. It's, it's two different links. If you have to go into Concom to actually be able to access the G I S, you can't just do a search off the main page. I've been trying for two weeks until I figured out, go in through Concom, then I could access it.
Lisa, there's um, at the bottom of the first page of the website?
Don't tell me it's there.
Yeah, it, there's town code and G I S mapping or town maps.
Okay, so public, do not do a search looking for it and then go to where it takes you. Okay?
Yeah, under the community tab, town maps, G I S.
All right, that's just too simple, never mind, thank you.
If it's, for what it's worth, it took me a while to find it there, too. I just had a desktop, and that's all I used, and. Um, we're working on the fiscal year twenty-four open space monitoring locations. Um, Lucas Environmental has a draft contract, and he's reviewing the scope um and is hoping to get back to me next week so they can perform the site inspections. We'll be sending out a letter to any of the um residents and a budding to the open space uh within the next couple of weeks so they're aware that Lucas Environmental will be out there per usual. And then they'll repi- uh, provide a draft report, um, which we'll look at and then finalize. And then they'll do a quick presentation, most likely will encumber a small amount to go into fiscal year twenty-five for that. Um, performance evaluations are due June seventh, so um I'm going to be, start working on those for me and Colleen, and um probably corresponding with Mimi on that. Um, and then, once we have those finalized, um, I can share that with the board. Um, and then they, you can comment if there's anything you'd like to add or delete. So it'll take me a little time to work on this, but they want them by June seventh. Yeah, it's kind of expedited. Yeah, I know. I'm gonna try. The performance evaluations, you know, the yearly performance evaluation? They're due.
They're, they're due to the Personnel Board on June seventh?
Yeah, they do that with, because I believe um somebody, I think the Chair may be out after that, and so they don't want to miss the opportunity to hit the, you know, the June thirtieth deadline for review.
Is this something that you're already doing? I, like, this is Mr. Morris. Just going back in my memory to when this has happened in the past, and Mr. Morris, I think, was, took the responsibility on of submitting the performance review of our.
We would, I would draft it, and, and I.
Okay.
Prepare it all, and then Mimi reviews it um as a second set of eyes and to make sure everything is managed properly.
And it goes to the, to the board for comment, but this doesn't leave very much time.
So how are we gonna do that?
I, last year, I sent it to the board um without a meeting, and if you had comment, you could comment individually back to me.
Okay.
And then we would update, um, most of it was maybe a typo, maybe something reworded or we missed an item. So they, it wasn't anything too intense. Um, it's um.
That's okay with me.
Yes, and if Mimi, you don't mind working with me to review once I have it finished, then we'll take it from there. And then I work with Colleen on hers, and we get that established, and Mimi does a final review of that with me as well. Okay.
Thank you. Thank the board. The town is very fortunate to have such a strong planning board.
Hey, thank you.
Hey, thank you, Paul. You can come to every meeting.
Yeah. And lastly, we have two upcoming um Public Shade Tree, Scenic Road, Scenic Road Public Shade Tree Removal Applications coming in. We have Twenty Woodbury Road, which is a private resident um who's seeking to have three trees removed, and then we have the D P W Resident Request List. Um, I think there's probably like thirty-two trees on there that the D P W feels aren't warrant attention and perhaps their removal. Um, those are slated for June eighteenth. Colleen will be processing those applications and distributing them to the Planning Board members in the relevant departments, probably next week, beginning of next week or end of this week. So you'll have that in time.
Karina, can we make sure we find out when the arborist is going to um walk those trees prior to the hearing?
Oh, so um, we had a really good meeting last week. Mimi and I and Debbie and Bill Kundif and Chris Leroy and um Marguerite Landry to talk about the tree policy and, you know, how it's working, and for all of us to get on the same page, because Bill was relatively new to the policy. Um, and, you know, Chris has been doing, Chris Leroy's been doing a great job on that. So um, the spreadsheet that they now provide includes two additional co- uh columns. So there'll be a remarks column, which is information that Chris Leroy receives and responds to as far as, you know, these three trees are dead, I agree with this. And then there's a column where he says, remove, trim, or leave. And then there's a column that the arborist says his opinion, remove, trim, or leave. Um, all the trees on this list have already been visited by the arborist last fall, I believe, if not sooner, because this was the pending application from fall of twenty-twenty-three, which hadn't met all the application requirements. Um, so in the future, we ask that we do get a date. However, it can happen over a whole week. The arborist doesn't go do them all in one day. So I think that um we express from the Planning Department side that as long as we know when he's going out there, the Planning Board typically, the members usually go on their own and go look at it. So we didn't find that would be a big bone of contention at this point, but if we knew approximately, because now we have the spreadsheet coming in and the arborist's opinion is on that spreadsheet. So.
And if there's a, an issue, then we just, we vote against the, the tree removal, and they can go back out again.
It just seems like it was such an easy step to alleviate larger discussions that take place in the joint hearing, but I mean, it, it is what it is, and if, if, if that's the way that it has to be, I mean.
Well, I think that we can still ask, you know, can you give us a timeframe where he might be out there? But it's difficult to pinpoint one day where he's gonna be there, where ten, like, you know, a caravan will follow him around to the different trees. I think maybe that's where it was a little bit more difficult. But if we get a general timeframe, there may be opportunity to join him out there. I just can't say that's like a stringent one-day type of thing on, from their behalf. So we thought that was an okay compromise in the sense, I'm not saying we don't follow the policy because the policy should probably be updated, but um, that's what we're gonna work on, well, in the future, if there's anything. Um, and then we also think um National Grid will be coming in with a, a hazard tree removal plan. We're not sure if they're coming in with just an application.
Right. The way I understood.
A plan?
Before December thirty-first, right? They can come in with an annual plan.
For next year?
For next year. So we don't.
Oh.
A contractor came in who works for National Grid with one application for twenty-two lotis quorum. And as we were talking about it, he said, well, I have other trees. We said, well, why don't you just come in with all your trees at once? But we weren't sure if he was coming back with a straight application or if he was coming back with a hazard tree removal plan, which is the annual plan, meaning for trees to be removed next year. So we'll wait to see.
She heard application, I heard mitigation plan.
So, so we asked National Grid, because in Mass General Law, it says that the um. The utility may, and if requested by the tree award and shall, submit the um annual maintenance plan and the hazard tree plan, you know, by December thirty-first for the following year.
Yes.
And National Grid said they don't do hazard tree plans, they only do the maintenance plans.
I have a, I have a hazardous tree plan from last year that they approved.
No, 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 that was a hearing that they removed hazardous trees.
That was the decision we looked at that said, see, it's a public hearing. It was July twenty-twenty-three, and that's where the confusion came in, because there was a public hearing last year, like a list of their hazard trees, but it wasn't really, it wasn't a mitig, it wasn't a tree removal plan.
No, it was a hearing for specific trees.
Yeah, that, I did look.
Within one certain line or whatever it's called.
The lines and whatnot, but there was a hazard mitigation when I was looking it up on National Grid. They do have hazard mitigation plans um that they do submit.
In other towns?
Well, not here.
I just, we just don't know what's coming in. If he wants to come in as a plan, we'll, you know, obviously run it by you. If he wants to come in as applications, I'm not.
Yeah, so if it's a plan, it is submitted to the Select Board and the Planning Board, and it's a, a discussion at a meeting in which we either approve or not the plan. But if a hearing requires all the notification and everything. And the maintenance plan allows them to take down anything up to eight inches, and over that, they're required to have a hearing.
Right.
And we asked them again when they came with their maintenance plan last time about their, their hazardous tree plan, and they said they don't do.
Misunderstanding, maybe they're coming in with all applications.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll follow up with him. I took his number.
Yeah.
So we'll give him a call and confirm. I think it's an application coming in. Um, but we'll see, we can, we can figure. And just to reiterate that, when there's a consolidated tree hearing, right? The Select Board votes, and the majority has to say yes, and the Planning Board votes, and the majority has to say yes, both have to be a yes for it, to be a yes tree removal.
Debbie fixed that for us.
I was confused again, and so I asked Mimi earlier today, and you explained it to me, and I was like, that, that's it.
These are already scheduled.
Can we go back to the G I S for a second? So I went on the town website, and I went to the bottom, and it's timing out. I can't get in still. I can't, I can't get in, it times out. But when I go through Concom, again, I can't get in. So I don't know if there's a problem with the link.
Like you.
It doesn't, it doesn't like me at all. So I'm just saying at the bottom, go to the bottom, Town Maps, click on it, and then click on G I S, and it just, it's timed out like six times for me. So again, I don't know if it's, if it is a link issue, we should probably let Jay know so we can get it fixed. That, that's my only point I'm trying to make.
Is you have a Wi-Fi connection? Is your Wi-Fi working? Okay. It's working, okay. We'll test it. We'll test it.
Yeah, it should tell you that you're leaving the site and going to
Yeah, she did and then it, and then it was
Too many cookies?
We have two sets of minutes.
Okay.
So a motion is to approve the planning board minutes from April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demiria, yes.
Bracio, yes.
Motion is to approve the planning board minutes from May twentieth, twenty twenty-four.
May
May sixth.
Today.
May sixth. Twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Uh, for discussion, line um seventy-five and seventy-six, just the spelling of the last name, C R E D E. That's Phaedra.
It's Deirdre?
Phaedra's the first name, I think.
Wait, you're talking about Miss Fea, greedy?
Oh, Fea, yeah.
Oh, spell it again?
C R E D E. That's it. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demiria, yes.
Bracio, yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demiria, yes.
Bracio, yes.
Thank you.